Good evening. I'd like to call this evening's Legal Affairs Committee meeting to order. With us are our committee members, Councilors McGinn, Councilors Melville, Councilors Peach and Councilors Turco. We're also joined by fellow Councilors Daigle, Manning Martin, Gould and Gamache. The first item on this evening's agenda is a request to purchase city-owned land, portion at Tulindalene, Tulindalene Jean Lane. Councilors have a packet 8D. I'd like to see if we can make a motion to receive item 8D, please.
Move under suspension rules, receive item 8D on the agenda this evening?
Thank you, Councilor Gamache. You've heard the motion. Any discussion?
Are you on the little bit?
It's a vote. So that, that package was... Okay, Councilor Gamache?
I apologize.
Yeah, I can't make that motion. I'm not in the voting.
I'll make the motion to make, to receive that.
You've heard the, so you've heard the motion, Councilor Melville. Any discussion hearing done? It's a vote. Thank you. So councilors and committee members, this is not a public hearing, but this is a request by the homeowners at 27 Emily Lane to purchase this particular property. I would at this time like to have their counselor, their attorney representing them come up and give a brief overview of everything. Once again, just brief to give the committee members an overview. Thank you. And please announce your name and address for the clerk. Thank you.
Good evening. Attorney James Sears from Seven Federal Street, Denver, Mass. I'm here this evening representing Robert and Lisa Polignone of 27 Emily Lane in Peabody. As was mentioned, as you can see in your materials, through inadvertence, shortly after they bought their home in 2000, July 2 of 2007, they had a pool installed the following, following year and thought the pool was installed correctly. They got permits through the city. They were shown a plot plan, if you will, by the installer and they've used the pool since until this year when they put the house on the market in the spring, got a buyer for the house. And we found out when the buyer had a mortgage inspection plot plan done that in fact, the pool was on city-owned land. As you can see by the materials and the survey plan in question, part of the pool is on city-owned land. This land was actually conveyed to the city, was given to the city back in 1989 by Charles Benevento. And there is a park, but the park is not affected by this through the topography and the location of the park. So what the, the owners are looking for is to purchase, in this case, about a 4,100 square foot parcel of land from the city. I did speak with City Council Donald Kahn on this and presented a draft deed along with an appraisal which you have by the appraisal group, giving a value of $14,000 to $15,000 for the land. I believe that the appraiser, this, this lot is not a buildable lot, so because of the, the size of the lot. So the, the value that he assigned, I believe, is comparing it with buildable lots. There weren't any comparables directly in the city of Peabody. But I leave you to review that appraisal and we need to come up with a value for the conveyance. My clients do have the property under agreement. It's been under agreement for a few months through this process and they're hoping to get this settled with the city if we could so that they can go forward with their conveyance and they're seeking to buy another home. So I wouldn't entertain any questions if there are any at this point.
Do any committee members have any questions of Mr. Sears at this time? Thank you, Mr. Sears. So we'll see if anyone else has any questions. Otherwise, you can just turn off the microphone.
Thank you.
So councilors, you heard the, the comments, an overview from Mr. Sears. A couple of things. There is certainly the memo that was put together from Community Development by Kurt Belavant, talking about some of the background on it and given some of the options that this committee can review, which could include doing nothing, swapping actual equal amount of land with the homeowner, selling an easement, which in my opinion would be difficult with a pool. And then also, one of the options is obviously to look to sell this small parcel of land. And then the other option is the city to do nothing. So at this time, I don't know if any committee members have any questions, if anyone, any other councilors have any comments or questions? Councilor Gamache?
Yes, thank you. Brief history, as you alluded to earlier, I was contacted by the homeowners concerning the, the pool being on the, on the city-owned property. I don't, I believe that Kurt's memorandum, probably the best thing to do would, in my opinion, is don't go with an easement or anything like that, but to outright sell the property. If you look at the property, there's a, there's the park on Linda Jean and there's some abrevities next to it. And then there's the property that the Polignones own. And I just think that the easiest thing for the city to do, it's a non-buildable lot. That's why it was donated as a park. It's all ledge. And it's, it's really a tough piece of property if you were to have to develop it. And that's why the city was given the property for the park. We've made several upgrades with the park. The park department has spruced it up, made it look good, planted some abrevities. And I think that probably the best thing to do would be the number, the options that Community Development has given us would be that the city sells a portion of the land to the property owner after an appraisal is done in the owner's expense and have, and have that be taken care of and we'll put this to rest. So I'm not on the committee, but that's what my recommendation would be to have someone on the committee make that in a form of motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gamache. I want to make sure. Councilor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've gone back and forth on this and ultimately I think we're here to help people. I do believe that we all know where our property lines are and I believe this was not just a mistake that they, they put this pool here. I don't consider myself to be, you know, a surveyor of any sort, but when I bought my house in Peabody, my surveyor showed me where my rear property line was. And to this day, I know exactly where it is. There's actually a tree in the middle of a swamp. And so I have a difficult property line to find, but I can find it. So I do believe this was intentional. Whether that's true or not, here we are. So my concerns with this, we have the assessed value listed as under $5,000 from Kurt Belavant's office. We have the appraised value from the owner at 14 to 15. And elsewhere in this document, if I can find that location, it's listed as possibly up to 16,000. So 16,444, I believe is that number, 16,644 in item 8D. There's no page number, so I can't give that to you. But so the cost is something that I'd like to know, you know, if we do agree to sell this, what we're going to get for, for monetary gain. And the second thing, that the property has been used as residential land for 15 years. I'd like to get an opinion from the assessor's office as to what the tax value of that property for 15 years that we probably should have been getting that we didn't get. So I'd like to get adequate gain for, value for the, for the property, likely at the higher end. I'd be more in favor of the $15,000 range. And I'd also like to get whatever that property tax that was not paid for the last 15 years. So if you would like to refer that, I can make that in a form of a motion to refer approximate tax, a request to get a, a tax value from the assessor's office. And you could also include Mr. Gingrich, the Finance Department on that, that motion. And the second part of my mo, I'll go with that motion first and then I'll go with the second motion.
And Councilor Turco, before you make the motion, I just want to comment, just to, you brought up very good points. I want to be clear that this matters before us through no fault of the city. We are here and the only reason I brought it forth as a request is there was a building permit issued in 2008. Certainly there are not records that will show, you know, that things were handled probably in the most effective manner. At the end of the day, the homeowner has a pool on city property. So I want to be clear, that's not great. And we could just say no. One other thing I just want to add is that regarding the value, the appraisal, is that for those of you that were able to get through it and review it, the appraisal was just looking at is open land. Certainly there are betterments that were added, a pool, and there's, you know, landscaping. So it is certainly maybe someone could consider it more valuable than what, you know, that appraisal that was given us. It's just a guidance. I want to just comment, certainly before you make your motions, this committee can determine the price of what we believe that sale should be if we decide to sell it, within reason. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you. Councilor Turco?
Okay. So the first motion stands as just asking for what the taxes for that parcel will be over the last 15 years since the pool was installed on, on the city property.
Councilors, you've heard the motion. On the motion, any discussion? Councilor McGinn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the motion, so through you to Councilor Turco, would it be your desire to make any sale contingent on also paying these back taxes rather than, I mean, what I'm trying to understand is do you have any desire to advance this tonight? Or do you want to wait for that information before taking an action?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Councilor McGinn. So my intention would, when we do come up with an appropriate number, if we do that tonight, then I would be happy with making the motion for the purchase of the land in addition to the taxes as provided by the assessors. I don't need that number tonight. Whatever they tell me that number is, you know, I'll believe that it is. I'll just make it contingent that it's included above and beyond the sale price.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. Councilor Turco, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I'll hold back on making a motion on cost till we fully discuss it. But additionally, if you, if you all remember, we had Holly Todd appear before us, who was a woman from Ward 1 that wanted to purchase a piece of land. And she was told by Community Development that that had to be notice sent out to the abutters and they could make offers on the land. And I want to make sure that we're holding.
Mr. Chairman, we, do we still, we still have a motion, right?
My apologies. Motion's on the floor.
My apologies. So we have a motion on the floor from Councilor Turco, and I did not actually capture the vote. So on the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Turco, apologies.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilor McGinn. So yes, I want to make sure we're holding everybody to the same standard. I don't, I don't think Kurt Belavant's is still here. He is. If Mr. Belavant's would mind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through, through you to Mr. Belavant. So if you remember the Holly Todd situation, I believe it was Outlook Ave. She was looking to purchase the land. I believe that was also under 5,000, if I'm not mistaken. I don't recall the exact amount, but we had some requirements that this be notice sent out to a butters. We had several butters respond that they would want the land. And it never wound up going anywhere because there was some, some issues with that. And I think ultimately we decided the mayor needed to put it on RFP for the land. That was the final decision with Ms. Todd. But I won't hold everybody to the same standard. So are we doing any of these things with, with this parcel?
We haven't done that yet. So the typically, we would review the property, see if we thought it was worth more than the 5,000. There's a, procurement requires us to follow a certain law in regards to disposal of municipal property. So there are certain requirements that need to be done in order to, to do that. So I would believe if the council decided that something that they would do, then that would set another process, working with the purchasing office in regards to the proper way of disposing municipal property.
Thank you. So I, you know, I know you're not on the attorney. I'm just, do you think it's appropriate that we come up with a value on this tonight? Or do we, do we move it forward for the potential sale and you come back to us with a potential value? I'm at a later date.
Well, certainly. I haven't, I haven't seen appraisal. It's something that we would require. It's probably something that we would want to hire our attorney or our appraiser to have done at the cost of the, the property owner's expense. So it's not something that we, someone would hand us and say, hey, here's an appraisal. We would want to have our own person do that.
Okay. So with that information, I'll defer to the council. I think that means that we probably shouldn't come up with an arbitrary number on our own and that we should defer to Community Development on this. But I'll open it up. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. All valid questions. Part of what the process was is where there was no abutters, an unusual situation, but certainly I have no problem keeping this in committee and making sure that we get, we make a motion to have a, another, the city review the appraisal and come up with a value of this process and follow any other procurement or sale of, of city-owned land as we typically would. That would be what, if all would be. Councilor Melville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just so that we're at least advancing this, would the motion be something to the effect of the property owner would start the process with Community Development that the, they would start their appraisal process, so at least we'd get a dollar figure at their expense and then come back to finalize any sale? If that makes sense?
That would be an appropriate motion, but I opened up to the floor. Any, any councilors have questions or comments? Council Peach and then Councilor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this is quite an interesting process. On the application, there's boxes, you know, and the one that's checked here, I assume filled out by the applicant, is assessed values below 5,000. So I mean, I guess maybe through you to Mr. Belavant, like, do we review this and say, we agree with that or we don't agree with that? I mean, the application came to us, you know, if it's, if the assessed value is below 5,000, there's no appraisal and the butters just get notified. But if, if this is above $5,000, appraisal is required. So I guess the application itself is very confusing. And I'm wondering how it got to the council before all that stuff happens? Is that how this works? We have to express a will to even consider selling the property? Or someone makes an offer on a property and then goes through all that and comes back to the council? I think this is unique, but people have tried to buy land before and we've just never gotten this far, I guess.
Somewhat, yes. So the, there's an application that somebody interested in buying city property would fill out, which, which the applicants had done that. They, if they would look online, which they may have done, I'm not quite sure, and they would find the assessed value was 5,000 or less, I could only believe that it's assessed at that because it's city property in a park. So we're not going to assess city parks at a high value. If it was assessed as a single-family lot that could be built upon, then it would be assessed at a lot higher value. But since it's a city property and is served as a park, it's appraised at a lesser value.
Thank you, Council Peach. Councilor Turco, you have the, leave your hand up.
Well, I lost track of my question, so I'll defer. Go ahead.
So at this time, Councilor Turco?
My question was on that motion by Councilor Melville, if we could add the requirement that the property taxes be paid at the value provided to us from the assessor's office for the 15-year period, above and beyond the sale price.
Councilor Melville, you be agreeable to amending that motion?
Amended.
So councilors, you've heard the motion. The Councilor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Councilor Melville. So in the, in the memo from Community Development, they laid out all those options. And in the sale options, they laid out, there were kind of some sub-options within there. One of which was, you know, they were based on how much of the lot to sell. And I think the appraisal came back, the, the residence appraisal came back for the 4,161 square feet. That's the one that makes the most sense to me. But I think, I think we just need to give Community Development some direction on which specific option to obtain the appraisal for. So I think that needs to be woven into the motion so that we, we don't make it ambiguous for, for, so my suggestion, Councilor Melville, would be to specify the 4,161 square foot alternative.
Let's include that 4,161 portion of the property. So moved. Mr. Chairman, you got all that? Or do you want me to make it again?
I would like to take a two-minute break just so I can get this squared away so we can have it. It's important, okay? Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We're all back in session. Wanted to just outline the motion as, with the various amendments. So the motion as, as made would be to move to start the appraisal process. Second part would be that the applicant would pay at their own expense for an appraisal for the city to review the value for the 4,130 square foot parcel at their own expense. And the second, the third part would be that the applicant is expected to pay all back taxes on the property for this parcel for 15 years, above and beyond any sale price as determined by the city. On the motion, any questions or comments? Or did I miss anything? Councilor McGinn?
Yeah, thank you. Did you, was the square footage 4,000? What did you read there?
I had 4,131 square feet.
61. 4,161.
Thank you, Councilor McGinn. So the fourth, motion should read 4,000, 4,161. Thank you, Councilor McGinn, for the catch. Any further questions or comments from committee members or councilors? Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Turco?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Can I just ask a clarification? You're, are you motioning to have another appraisal done in addition to appraisal that we already had done? Or the appraisal from the assessor's office? Just to clarify.
Looking for appraisal for, for the city.
Okay.
You'll have a copy of the motion. You'll receive it in a couple of days. So you'll have all the details.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a request by Mayor Betancourt to amend the zoning ordinance of our city, specifically regarding Section 780-90, vacant structures and vacant land. I'll now welcome his honor, Mayor Betancourt, to the podium. Mayor Betancourt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you. Good evening, councilors. I'm prepared to move forward today. However, we do have a large crowd. I know we have another item on legal affairs and I expect that we'll have a lengthy, regular meeting. I expect that this ordinance that I'm bringing forward today might generate a great deal of discussion and debate. So if it's okay, I would, I'd be okay with holding off to another legal affairs meeting in the future to keep this meeting moving forward.
That'll be fine. Mayor Betancourt, we can move on to the next agenda item unless there's any concern from fellow councilors, committee members. So at this time, we'll move to just keep that in committee. On the motion, there's a motion. I'd like to make, see if someone can make a motion to keep this in committee. Thank you, Council Peach. You've heard the motion. On the motion and discussion hearing done, it's a vote. The next item, final item for tonight's agenda, is a motion that was made by, a few months ago, by Councilor Turco regarding the possibility of changing the rules and orders of the City Council to address the number of continuances allowed for a public hearing. So at this time, I'd turn it over to Councilor Turco if you'd like to give a brief overview of remarks, anything regarding his motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman O'Neil. So yes, we all know why this came up. It's the constant continuances that are being requested by attorneys that have pretty much held business at a standstill at times on this council and created undue, unnecessary work for the, for the clerk's office with continuous, you know, printing and submittals. And one of the, one of the issues that was brought up initially was the, the lack of re-notification. So when I, when I first made this motion, I thought about rule changes on the council. But through some discussions with Councilor McGinn and we discovered that the rule is already there. It's Rule 16, which, if I can get to that very quickly. Of course, I can't. Is that Rule 16? I got it. I just can't find 16. Let's see. That's where there's a different Rule 16, which is weird. You know, I don't. What the hell was it? I just had it. Which, which page? No, there's another page here that has. Give me one second. Thanks, Peter. Okay. I shall read it directly from the rules instead of this paperwork. Much, would be much easier. So Rule 16 states, "If the petitioner requests a postponement or recess of the special permit public hearing, the City Council shall, shall take formal action to approve said request. If the request is denied, the applicant shall be prepared to go forward with the special permit hearing. If the City Council approves said request, the petitioner must re-notify a butters of the rescheduled hearing day by registered return receipt mail. Those receipts must be returned to the city clerk at least seven days prior to the hearing. The city clerk shall, shall send the initial notice to a butters of the scheduled public hearing by regular mail." So we have the, the option at each and every turn to, to request this. One of the, you know, point of discussion that Councilor McGinn and I had was, we would have to recall to do that. We would have to make sure that we, we notify upon continuances because there won't be every continuance. There are continuances where it's justified at our request that, you know, we continue so that we can do our due diligence, or conditions where waiting for department heads to get back to on an issue. So, you know, I think that we don't need to make drastic changes, but we need to be aware of that rule. And if we're not going to, I think the rule stands going to, I think the rule stands, no matter. So actually, you would have to suspend that rule if you're not going to ask the attorney to re-notify. So at this point, I think probably requesting that specifically some of these continuances that we've had on the agenda for several months, that we move forward with requesting re-notification, may show the attorneys that we're just, we're not going to continue to do this. And unfortunately, he's going to have to go to his client and tell them that it's going to cost him additional money because of putting these on the agenda too early. Now, the second part of the discussion is Rule 17, which we all know very well. And we continue to get these applications when these things are still in with other boards. I was watching the planning board the other night in 47 Tremont Street. Hadn't even gone for construction review yet, but yet it's been on our agenda for weeks now. So I spoke to Bob Langley, who was just meeting with that applicant today for the first stage of construction review. So I don't understand why these are being submitted. And I, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the clerk, can we not accept these applications? Well, these are, I know we went through a phase where we were doing that for a little bit. Did something happen with that? Is it, can we, can we not accept the application to reserve that right?
Well, counselor, the building inspector signs off on the application, saying that it's all in order to go forward, and so.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I wasn't going to make any motions tonight because I didn't see any need to, because I think it's all here in the rules. But I will make that motion to request that we bring attention to Rule 17, since it is a new, he is a new building commissioner, and that the City Council is the last stop in the permitting process, and should not, the clerk should not receive any applications for special permits until all other boards are satisfied. And I'll move forward with that motion.
Counselor, you've heard the motion from Counselor Turco. On the motion and discussion hearing, roll call vote, please.
Counselors Turco?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councilors. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. You've heard the motion. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. We are adjourned. Thank you.